7:04. We have an adjustment to the agenda. It will go under K. It will be number two. So it says one on your adjustment, it'll become two. Now entertain a motion for consideration of the minutes of Wednesday, July 11th, 2012, two board meetings. Most important. I have a second. Any discussion? Corrections, errors? All those in favor? To the others, thank you. Any communications? Let's go to the floor. We was going to talk about the security of the cloud. You had a request to talk about security of the cloud. You want to do it here? Or you want to do it? Remember it on the last meeting? Okay, that's true. You want to do it right here?
Right there?
You go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Some questions raised about security of the cloud. And I'm specifically going to talk about Google applications for education. That is a system that we do apply for. When we make an application, we are accepted. It's not like your Gmail, Google, like you'd have at home. There is a process to it. Through this process, there's a lot of documentation about security and what they do. And I'll give you a brief rundown of what that is. First of all is personnel. They talk about their personnel. Their personnel, they guarantee go through a security process. Everybody working on this system does have to go through this process. Their hardware, the physical plans of the hardware is secured by their own security system. The hardware itself, the operating systems are their own design. They maintain antivirus, malware protection, firewall. This makes sense because the last number I got, they have 1.9 million platforms in a variety of systems over here. When you have a system that big, they can't let any other get down. Their security system probably better than those other ones. So, I mean, they had these statements, you have to be guaranteed, but, I mean, they simply can't be better. So Google Apps for Education, RSU 67, is part of that system, okay? Little iPad here for notes. This system, Google Apps for Education, is administered by us, by me specifically. Okay? The organization, the development, the accounts are all done by me. It is not done by Google. Google has no rights to it. It is done by me. So when we make all of this stuff, it is done here. Okay? Accounts, well, some of the people who kind of questioned it is account information. I know there was a parent that mentioned something about, you know, being concerned about their children. The only information that goes to Google is a first name and a last name, and then there are like this. They have Denise Hamlin, D. Hamlin, RSU 67 daughter. They don't know if she's superintendent in school or first grade student. There is no other place with any other information, none whatsoever. Okay? So it's just first name and then last name. Okay? As a side note, I think what some people might be concerned with would be maybe demographics of students, telephone numbers, some of that kind of information. That information is all on a student information source. That's PowerSchool. Okay? That is a completely independent system, system sitting upstairs, security administered by me, very secure. So that's the only system that has that kind of information. Okay? Accounts that are made in Google application, we do organize the groups into, the accounts in specific groups. And the reason for that is there are a lot of applications that you can do in Google Apps. You can do Gmail, you can do a calendar, you can do Google Doc, you can chat, you can do all these different types of things. We organize them because as staff, we probably will do everything. Students, we probably would not want to do that. So a student sitting at a first grade level may not have accessibility to Gmail. And we probably won't. Or if they do have accessibility to Gmail, it's just internal, so they can't chat with friends elsewhere. And we can do that by grade level. That organization is being done by me. Anybody that doesn't, okay? So we are controlling that. And that's all working with the A team on those kind of decisions. That's not what I was saying today. Other policies, I administer policies like password strength. I say you have to have so many characters, I can't say like Web McCormick is website. You know, that would be maybe something somebody could really, you know, guess really quick. We have security systems where you have to have eight characters and a number involved. That makes internally more secure so students can't sniff somebody else's password. Okay? That's internal to us. Email security, email's public. Whether we run first class, Gmail, Yahoo Mail, basically email and email addresses can be sniffed anywhere. Okay? So that's really not a concern. Content in email, again, is really basically public. Document security. Okay? And when I talk about document security, one of the aspects of Google Apps that teachers and students are excited about is you can share documents and collaborate. You can do the, a teacher can do a document and share that with his staff. Okay? Documents is something that does get saved to Google. Okay? They say that they will not look, it is our documents, they do not look at the documents, but they do have permission to serve them because of antivirus or software that they have to go through. Okay? Let's use some common sense. Why would anybody spend any time or effort if trying to break into one of the most secure systems in the world? They certainly wouldn't do it to do a student test. They would be after, they would be after a social security number or a debit card number, those type of things which are supposed to be found along here. So, you know, put some common sense to it, okay? The only really situation we have is whether a document is shared internally. And that's where the password strength comes in. And also classroom management starts to be concerned. Teachers are going to be aware of this. I guess no system is 100% secure ever, but we do pride ourselves here and try to do the best that we can. I'm not a guru. If I was a guru, period, I probably would be. You know? So we do the best. We do keep things very secure. We do not give accounts out to people very often. Okay? PowerSchool, for instance, you know, secretaries and the officers don't have the same rights to see the same thing. It's a right to know. So we are very, very secure on that. We do the best that we can. Kind of give you a little bit of an overview of what it is. Any questions or? Like I said, they do have these statements, they have do have an eight-page policy, but it's just a written statement. I mean, whether they actually adhere to it, we assume that they do. The security really pays for that. And we are well aware, I'm not going to let students have accounts of, with this work and professional development and all of that.
Any questions for that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rick.
Appreciate it. Public participation, good evening. Do you have anyone who would like to participate tonight? Okay, thank you. Personnel, you have none?
We actually, we have a resignation from Jamie Carney. And we have a resignation from Gabe Berry, who's going to work at RSU 50. And we have Jamie Carsh, who has resigned as school nurse, who will be teaching the CNA course at Redding.
And we will accept all of those. Okay, board committee report, separations.
We haven't met since our last board meeting, but we're going to be meeting next Tuesday.
And policy committee, we have a meeting scheduled for July 31st. And that will be at 6 o'clock.
What's the date then?
July 31st. That's the day you hold on the budget?
Yes.
And it will be at the central office. And for those of you on the committee, you should have copies of all of them because the ones, these are all the ones that we were taping up in May and we sent back to the administration and just some others that, we have three that we did a first reading in April. And we have did a second reading, so we need to do them again because ADT passed and our policy says that they will be done within the first and second reading. So we need to start again with them. And Mrs. McDonald told us one that we had to do, so you will get that out to us then, right?
Yeah, I mean, yes, chapter 33, the changes of the strength of inclusion. That's a mandated policy with that law has changed. We have to update our procedure and policy.
Wow, so you'll give us a copy of that one? Any others?
Anyway, we have a community policy that has to go out for the student packets, we have the employee, technology policy, we have.
The student computer and internet use and internet safety, that's a new one, new legislative changes, we need to do with that one. The social media and social networking one, that's the one that we've got to redo because of the date. JKAA timeout rooms and paracute restraint, that's the one we were talking about with chapter 33, that's the new legislative one. And then the others are all ones that we had in the main meeting. So check, is something that you don't have and you just let Lisa know and she'll see it together.
Would be possible whenever we just do the last board presentation?
Yeah. Probably, because that's our, yeah.
It'll be in the policy draft over.
So we have one for the, yeah. The ones that will be done, well, two. Online, the policy, they called it the policy drafts? And then obviously, they're.
On the first map?
No. On the website, that's the policy, the folder that we put up in the policy sections for public.
Okay.
For first or first or second reading. As long as they're addressed, they remain in there, they'll come up with a little document and they'll be posted in section of the board. Okay, personnel committee.
Yes, we met last evening. Good meeting. Did, so, so we started something that, that practice in the past, we did three executive reviews. And got some good insights, I think, from that. And also reviewed the scheduled stipends for teachers and various, various personnel are working on brands, reviewed that process. I thought we were talking on a couple of other items that we can't express about publicly, but looked at also the list of open positions. Both of our superintendents on applicants, some of the applicants for that. Talked about the literacy courses and that, that's a exciting piece that's coming up. I'm not sure our next meeting is in August.
It will be August. August 21st? Finance committee, Mr. Press.
We've been talking superintendent, getting ready to have our budget pass on the 31st below. We absolutely can carry the budget and, and actually, we will be on August 21st.
And just a point of clarification for the rest of the board members. When we were questioned about the number of finance meetings we have this year, I went home, I took my finance book out, and we have a meeting every single month except November when we went to RNO to the funding summit with the legislators and all of the superintendents and other board members of the campus area. So we did, we did meet a lot, we met every month, so.
And the finance committee participated in the seven public budget hearings.
Yes.
And the one.
Okay, committee reports, Region 3, Carolyn.
We were introduced to our area coordinator, Marrie, Mary, Pearl, I think it's, I don't know. Bruce, Bruce, okay. Was introduced and the new members, but one, Becky went in, she came back. Introduced, and Mary Keeden.
Keeden.
She was returned after several years off the board. We had several thank you notes, great, from scholarship offices. And our new phone system is plus 80% paid by e-rate funds. They have done another new phone and access equipment. It is paid by 80% of the e-rate funds. And the director explained that reimbursements for the state.
Can you speak up a little?
Okay. The director explained that reimbursement from the state for the CTE education is 69 plus percent. And that information we passed on to sending schools. And then another, the board accepted a proposal to enhance the medic production program. That's the, I'm not pronouncing the word. It's the one that has to do with, have a sounding engineer.
The sound system engineer.
Yeah, the sounding systemic program that was taught at Sterns for a half a year program. Under the proposal, the instructor will be at the Lincoln facility for an hour every day during the meeting. And they're trying to, it was noted that the, that the arrangements is in work in progress and that adjustments will be required. He's going to be there every day and he can't be there if he can't be there. And why would he be there?
Any questions for Carolyn?
Who's the 69% CTE?
Rembursement.
State reimbursement. Spend it, get it back, same way we agreed, raise a little up, spend it, remember your goal.
I'm not sure, I think that's the state I'm going to call it now, that?
Yes.
I guess you all know that Josh Heer resigned, and I'm sure you all know that he passed away. His cancer, which was very, very quick, it was diagnosed in May, that was it. And Mary Keeden did say that she would go back on the Region 3 board in his place, so, you know, we're lucky to have her because she was on that board for a long time, but she's very competitive with the operations. And Mary and her gift replaced yesterday. But she'll be up about soon, I'm sure. Us student representative won't start with us until September. The school board reports, we've got the board self-evaluation, we've got all of those. And if you've done any, sent them back, if not, sent them back. Any questions, welcome, Debbie?
I just was wondering, in light of everything that we've encountered over the last year, if maybe we don't want to review the forms that we're using and even the process that we're using and, and just try to layer again, and I've used the phrase reject several times, not that we're doing anything wrong, but if there's a better way we can utilize that information and have it processed and had it support us and help us improve ourselves, maybe it's worth looking into. I was just wondering if maybe we want to hold off on this until we've had a chance to, to look into what other school districts might find more informative data that they want regarding the types of forms they use and the process they follow. Okay? Tom?
So we've already filled out, again, I mean, we could look at it, I think, my, my book, you would look at the next year, some of us have already turned out, followed in and answered the questions as they were asked. So, I do think that we will follow it up.
Maybe, no?
That would be my, that would be my sense on it. And we already completed it and made it, that we continue with it and process this year and maybe take some time to fill out this one, or maybe look at this included for the other game. If there's some ideas, put them on the table, always, always invest in your ideas.
Okay, anyone else?
It could be shorter. There was a lot of questions on there. And I know you have to do it this way so you can have a comparison of prior years to this year, but, you know, it may make sense to try to shorten it up some, have more perfect questions and then start a baseline for what we have right now.
Debbie? Could you explain what is, once we've opened up the send them in, what is the process used to use that data? And how is it, who processes it, how is it recorded back? And when have we utilized it effectively, maybe in the past?
This, this is a packet of information. It would have been two summers ago, we received all of these different, in the blue, all of these different forms and chose the one that we used last year. That's the one we're using this year. The information's coming back into the office and I'm assuming Lisa will do it. All she does is add up all the numbers. She'll tell us, for example, just this one, "The board assures the development of long-range fiscal forecasts based on clearly identified assumptions." And she will say, three people said one, three people said two, three people said three, that's nine. Don't take one from five people said three, or whatever. But she gives us all that information and that.
She gave us an average?
She didn't last year.
I would like to see an average.
Okay? And this, this is what last year's results look like. Now, you can look at this closer later, but I just, this is what last year's looked like. The question is here and the totals are here. Then if you remember last year, the teachers' room, we went in and we went over all of these totals. And we looked to see, for example, here, I have number six circled, "Board members work to strengthen public confidence in the board and district relationship." We didn't think we did a good job with that last year. So that was one that we discussed and we went through each one and the ones that we didn't feel we did a good job with, we sat down and discussed. And then out of that, we came up with a set of goals of what we were going to do for following for this year. And that is in this report here. It came out as a PowerPoint. And then also, I had an article in the paper explaining, this was a news release, the seven roles that we set based upon the information that we took off here. Came out in what paper? Well, it came out in the Lincoln News, that's where I sent it. Oh. So it came, and it came out, I don't have a date here, but I know it came out in the beginning of the year because we were explaining, or I was trying to explain to the public that this is what we set the new goals for ourselves for each year. So that, that's what we do with it, is we compile it, we look at it, where are we not doing a good job and what can we set for goals to work on? And then we can look at these goals that we set for last year and compare and see if there's a, if we did any better. And if not, why not? And what can we do to improve? But we had a very lengthy meeting and we spent a lot of time on it. And this is all confidential. I mean, this is just numbers. It doesn't, nobody's names on it, we don't know, you know yourself how you voted, but nobody else knows how you voted. And we just sit there and discuss, hey, we didn't do well on that one. Why didn't we? What can we do? What's that goal going to be? And that was how we did it last year.
Certainly we're mid-screen during this evaluation, so that's certainly a valid point. And we'd like to point out to the personnel chair that ticked up, five, four or five years ago, there was a lady representative from Madawake, her name escapes me. But we started, the district was doing poorly in all evaluations, superintendent teachers, you know, they were all about evaluations. So we started going through the whole process, finding out which ones we did use evaluation forms, what we did use for evaluation forms. And I think about that time, we got sidetracked with evaluation of teachers' performance and whatnot. That turned out to be a, a big task and whatnot. Kind of sidetracked the reviewing of our local reviews here and assessments. It may well be good to have it on the personnel agenda sometime to sit down and find out, for the sake of the new members, identify who we do reviews for, review the process and review the format in, you know, it's been five years and we kind of dropped the ball on, on that process and it may be well worked to pick it up and run with it.
Actually gave them up when I came in, 2010, is when we put this together. The board had a variety of tools that either came from basically management or came from other school districts. And the board had reviewed them all and put together this evaluation. So this is, this one is relatively new, this one came when I came in. As far as teacher evaluation, that is a non-process, I think, I don't see that the two are related. And as far as administrative evaluation, those were all brand new formats, but all the board members had last year in their package, and I'm glad, I would like to give it to you again, those were based on, they weren't the guiding principles of the learning advice. So, I mean, and they all, they had descriptors and they were in narrative form, if you remember them, those things. So both the administrator evaluations are already done. Teachers will be ongoing because we're in a spot now that we have to start incorporating school data. So I don't know that it would be productive to try to do them all at the same time, but that's what we're hoping to do.
Well, overview of the whole process, what can we?
The process of evaluation in general.
Yes, in general, yes. The different.
That's not in relation to the board self-evaluation, right? With topic, okay, so you jump.
But so let's get back on topic then, that I think you played a good suggestion.
Yeah.
So let's get back on topic. Any other concerns? Do you want to continue with what we're doing for this year? Caitlin?
I don't have a problem going back and working at, you know, busy in our phone and everything, but I agree, we've already kind of started the process and where we're already in and in there and creating our goals from these forms that maybe we should just continue with what we have so that we can spend a lot of time figuring in the form that we all agree with and how we're going to want to and trying to decide what was needed in this school here.
Me too.
I'm, I go along with John and Randy, but Houston's already out of the bind. I think we ought to go with what we have. And I wonder. And I wonder if we're not, I thought the questions were very good and, and, you know, the point they were trying to make, I could kind of see what you were looking for in the whole thing. And I'm kind of wondering if we're not going to look at this to change it just for the sake of changing it. I think it was fine the way it was. I guess I don't have a problem with, you know, looking at other forms and stuff. But I thought this would be just fine and, you know, I don't think you have to reinvent the wheel.
Anyone else? All right, so consensus or do you want to vote? Just consensus will continue as we act. Okay, so we'll continue as we act. So if you haven't, though, they'll give more. Please do so and get them back. Because, and again, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do it in public. We're going to have to talk about all of this. So we will put that out as soon as we can. Debbie?
I just, would just want to know when we did this, and the reason I like to see the averages on there. So you can really take a look and see, you know, you can't look at one and three, five, or five, three, but, you know, if you go by the average, you can kind of like rank order. I mean, you can see where your weaknesses are. You can sort of compare to what you did last year, but, you know, I would hesitate to, I don't know how many goals you had, but I would hesitate to have too many goals because you'll never get them finished.
Well, no.
And then the few goals that you do, maybe one or two, you need to have some way to measure it and make sure, you know, to be able to determine if you're successful or not. And that should be stated upfront. And then again, how do you report the results of that to the public and everybody else? I don't know if you're planning to do anything with what you had for last year's goals, but if you're new board members, come on, make it see that before you, because I had.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll continue then. Superintendent report. You, you do have some Tony Weyer, your article, more active about the goal of attainment gap. It's information that is going to set a tone for a roll-up for mindset inevitable. We do have books, any books, please forget the books. We'll give them to you. Abby has the books. Mindset is a book that we will read. The district will read Mindset together. We will roll up the inevitable initiative for next year. We will be doing book study in discussion groups across the district. The board will also follow suit and follow in those book studies and that discussion so that by two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we will be ready to start implementing some of the cohort, the customized learning initiative. We will become a full partner for the customized learning cohort, which will open up the opportunity for us to start about using some of their curriculum materials. It will open some potential, we all have opportunities for our teachers, for our principals. And it is an initiative as we're moving into this technological age. Our kids are using technology in ways that we never dreamed of. We need to be as active with it as they are and create those opportunities for them to learn in different pathways. So we will again, be doing the book study along with the school system. And we will get chapters to read prior to board meetings and study questions to go with it. We'll initiate one and we will have some. Some structured discussion around where the district is going and our vision for how to implement that customized learning in our district over the next three quarters. We are ready to roll with that. We've done all of the hard work. We've evaluated all of our programs and services, our staff assignments, our expenditures, and we are ready. So that would be our big initiative for next year. So the articles will keep coming. The book study will be on its way. In your last packet, you did get some information about the administrative retreat and some work that we did. I just want to reiterate how much work we did get done. This group worked hard. We started with the Leadership Institute, which we will kind of do a summary of in August. We've had the auditors in our office for a full week, so we really have done nothing except handle everything the auditors have needed. We had quite a large group of teachers, board members and the administrative team. It was a very successful day. They will be part of our roll-out of inevitable as we move forward. So I want to. We will. We'll do, we'll do an overview of what we did at the institute. And you'll, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to read the articles as we go along with finding what happened. As far as the budget goes, we have post-books for the year. Again, the auditors are there looking at all of our funding from federal funds to food service to fuel everything you can imagine. So the conference room is piled high with district documents, which is why we switched into the My Office for a personnel committee meeting because it's full. And they occupy that for a week or two and then they disappear. So we are, again, July thirty-first, we'll have the opportunity to vote on the budget. It is a budget that will move the district forward, maintaining all of our programs and services. And it was a, you know, a good budget meeting, I thought. We thank the people who participated and we'll move forward from there. Our, I don't know. We have the technology plan. We are new. A lot of the district technology initiatives are listed in here. We'll be doing an update on all district technology. Doing an inventory of everything right down to cameras and dumb drives so that we have a full idea of everything. Other than computers, in the last we did a detailed computer inventory with a replacement list. Now we will assess all of our district technologies. And that's really it for me. I've been nominated to the Funding Committee for Main Superintendent Association as the Hankos Superintendent Regional Rep. So that is a three-year term. I will be attending funding meetings with the Department of Education as I represent for that, which gives us first-hand funding information straight from the wars of tax. It's wonderful. I have also been nominated as the Secretary to the Hankos Superintendent Association. So that will go for a year, at which time I'll assume the President's role. That would be interesting. And that's, that's about it. You have a bigger packet, you have a boosters. You have a boosters newsletter and a report from the project. I did tell the administrators with everything we had going on at the leadership, we will not get a report from them unless they will, willing to jump up and say something until September, your first meeting in September, you start getting the full report. They have been working pretty hard and I don't believe they've had a full vacation yet, although Kathy's heading out on a cruise. That's about it. If, you know, again, if ever you have questions about budget process, particularly in your home office, I'm glad to accommodate it.
Debbie, I'm the committee owner for the state funding. Is that the EPS funding format?
Yeah, we're funding.
So you're going to be looking at transportation and regional cost of living and pause. Thank you.
And they're also, they're going to have an outside agency audit.
Yeah, three thousand.
Right, they're looking for, they were requesting, proposing up now to look at assessing. Okay, any questions? Mrs. Hamlet? All right, thank you. And thank you administration for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
I just have to tell you that eleven twenty at night on Tuesday, we were at our retreat. I looked at the clock and Mrs. Menad was talking about common core standards. So we did work.
I am a taskmaster. Well, and I heard it went on until one and so on.
It ended, it rolled into breakfast, it rolled into lunch, it rolled into everything we did. But we really, we got a lot of work done. We had the opportunity to really have that interaction and get to know each other in a really good way. Hoping that Lowell feels and Rick, they feel like they're ready to step right into their jobs knowing where the district is going and what it's going to take to get us. Okay.
So Malar, does that, does that mean, you just said, does that mean John and I can go ahead and take our detention slips now?
Yes, you're going to get homework pretty soon about those books, but we won't discuss that tonight.
I'm breathing.
We'll give you extra support if you need it. Extra support, yes.
Okay, no old business. And under new business, new business is executive sessions for both of them. So before I do that, I'm going to skip down to our announcements for the next board meetings. And the next board meetings are going to be August eighth and August twenty-second. And that's going to be the second and the fourth. The eighth.
Yeah.
The eighth is the second one. The first is a Wednesday, so that is five Wednesdays. So four to the eighth and the twenty-second. And part of that is due because of the policies that we need to have in place before school starts. Some of the hiring that's going on, we want to be ready to have those names come before, to us. They have to be ready to have those games come before the board. So it seemed prudent. And also that night, we will be voting on calculating the votes and from the July thirty-first election, validation vote. So the mark goes down, August eighth and August twenty-second. Are there any items that requested by board members, community or staff to be included in the next agenda? Okay, so I'm going to go back up to page one. A motion to accept or not accept the superintendent's recommendation to enter into executive session according to one MRS A subsection four oh five six A to discuss an administrator's evaluation. Motion to accept. Okay, Reggie, I heard you first. Any discussion? What was your favor? It's unanimous.
For anyone that doesn't know, I'm in the dunk tank for the music boosters on Saturday. We should raise some money.
I'm going to call us in at seven forty-seven.
You got a new bikini.
Okay, I will play us out at eight forty-three P.M. Can we have a motion, please?
Chairman, based on our evaluation for Ms. Buschet, our principal, Ellen Burke, I will move that we put her contract three years for salary at seventy thousand. That's based on evaluation, the fact that we've hired her at a lower salary, beginning salary. And this moves her to the level of the other building administrators in this district. Second.
Wrong, new discussion. All right, all those in there. Thank you, unanimous. All right, I didn't write my other one. A motion to accept or not accept the superintendent's recommendation to enter into executive session according to one MRS A subsection four oh five six A to discuss a personnel issue. May I have a motion? Katie, Sarah and Carolyn, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Is there going to be any action taken when we get out of this?
That one?
This one's just information on a personal issue.
Yeah.
So are we going to have to come back and adjourn the meeting?
Yes, because they come back and say no action taken and they will adjourn us. If you clarify, it's back in at eight thirty-four.
Congratulations. And thank you. Try careful.
Mine, I can't see you. Mine, mine forty.
Man?
And no action was taken?
No action will be taken.
And I will call for a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you?